I think everybody wanted to impress Jeff, don't you?
I think so.
Good afternoon and welcome to the July meeting of the Murfreesboro Historic Zoning Commission. We do have a quorum, so I call this meeting to order. And you have received in your packet minutes from the June meeting, and I hope you've had a chance to review them. Are there any necessary edits or additions?
I make a motion we approve as submitted.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Okay, the meeting minutes are approved. Joe, please go over our first and it appears to be our only bit of business today.
Sure. The property in question is at 2255 Middle Tennessee Boulevard. The property owner wants to add a decorative black metal fence to enclose the front yard and a portion of the driveway. The fence is proposed to be five feet tall and will encompass the entire front yard up to the sidewalk. I did mention to the applicant that it has to be at least 20 feet back from the roadway, so he will be measuring that at some point, but it may not be exactly up to the sidewalk. The house is from the two-door Revival architecture, which is made of bricks, stone, and stucco with a gabled roof. And the house is a contributing structure in the East Main Historic District of the National Register of Historic Places. In your handout, I have included some pictures of the house and the surrounding properties. The picture on the screen in front of you is the front of the existing home. And here are the two houses on either side. The top picture shows the property directly to the north, and the bottom picture is the property directly to the south. Here is a hand-drawn layout of how the fence will look on the property. It's kind of hard to see, but if you could follow my cursor on the screen, it's this black line here that he drew on the plan. And so that is where the fence will encompass the front yard. There will be a gate on the sidewalk that leads from the public sidewalk to his front door, and there will be another gate over here on the driveway to enclose in the vehicles in the back. The property owner is in the audience, Mr. Jeff Davis, and he's here to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Davis, if you'd like to step up to the podium. If you could just generally describe the project. I think it's presented as a security fence. If you could elaborate on...
That's about it, Mr. Thompson, Chairman Thompson. We just have a lot of foot traffic. The, when the, when the road is completed, it'll be a grassed median in front of me. I've been told that there are going to be benches for the students to rest and just an extra layer of security, really. And I, I don't think it look, I don't think it will be that offensive. My wife, Ann, and I have, have looked at others. If you, I don't know if you can tell that by the picture Joe showed, the one with the orange barrel in front, but we've got about a two-foot rise. The yard comes up from the sidewalk. And so the house sits a little higher, so the five-foot fence is actually, is the perspective of the house. Well, yeah, you can see there. I don't think will block much of the front of the house. I mean, I'm certainly open to suggestions, but it's mainly security.
Have you noticed, I mean, is, are people walking through your yard more so since the...
Not now, no, not now. We don't have hardly any foot traffic now because the sidewalk is closed.
Before the, the road was being...
It was increasing, yeah. It, it was, and a lot of people that I don't think are students either. We're, we're pretty busy, you know, between Davis Market and, not Davis Market anymore, but we, we, we were, we had a lot of foot traffic before the, the construction project started, and we anticipate more when it's completed, which we've enjoyed living by the university. We're virtually on campus now. They join us on the north, but I just would like an, just an added layer of security, and we like the style fence that you all approved for us that goes in front of our courtyard.
Could you describe how they're cutting through your lot? Can we bring up the site plan again where the fence is proposed? I, I find that so many of our properties are becoming all surrounded by fences, you know, demarking their property lines, and so I'm just wondering how they're cutting through.
I can't really say that they, that they make a habit of cutting through. Chairman Thompson, it's more sidewalk traffic. We have on occasion had a couple take a seat on the front steps. We had an interesting situation a few years ago with an Easter egg hunt out front, but they, this, he was not a student, but he was an Easter egg hunter, though. But we just, you know, crime's kind of spiked over there in the last couple of years around campus, in and around campus, and we just want a little extra. I mean, y'all, you know what's been in the paper and what...
Does anybody on the commission have a question?
I, well, I have a couple of questions. I'm looking on the picture, and I think, are you directly across from the president's house, and so the...
Pretty much.
The house to your south, does it face Tennessee Boulevard, or does it face Main Street?
No, there's two between me and Main Street.
So there's, there's the house next to you, and then the next one is...
One on the corner.
...that faces Main Street?
Right.
Is that right?
It's on the corner, and it, I'm not sure if it has a Main Street address or a Boulevard address.
Okay. And, and do you know what the anticipated completion of the road project is? Does anyone know?
They, they kicked the project off in the spring of 2016, and they had a community meeting.
Yeah.
And it was an 865-day project.
Okay, so a little over two years.
Right. And as I was telling Chairman Thompson earlier, they were ahead, and now, now I think they're a little behind again, but...
Yeah. And the median, I drove down the street the other day, Middle Tennessee Boulevard, and I was looking at the median, and it appears that it's a narrower median in many places than south of Main Street, or maybe I...
It does.
Maybe that's my perception.
No, I think it does.
Because of the turn lanes.
I think it is, yeah.
And so I, I, and I don't know if the landscaping is intended to be the same as south of Main, but in terms of benches and that sort of thing, I don't know how many benches are going to be on the, are going to be in the median or, or where they'll be, but...
That was in the, when we first started talking about this project, gosh, it was five years ago.
Yeah.
That was one of the things that came up at one of the community meetings about benches in the median, the old style lamp.
Yeah. I don't think there are any benches on the south, south of Main Street, and it doesn't look like there's room really for benches, but I'm just kind of curious about the need for a fence. Most people use the sidewalk, you know, it's a, I live on Lidle Street, and I get a pretty good amount of pedestrian traffic on my street, and my house is much closer to the sidewalk. It's, you know, it's like 30 feet maybe from the sidewalk, and I, I don't, some, the perception of safety is, obviously, that's an important aspect of, of living anywhere, and...
Well, keep in mind, when you go south of Main, you leave campus. You know, we, we are, we are on campus. They're building a marquee right there at the intersection, and I think it's going to be the main entrance.
It'll, it'll be a big sign similar, I think, to the one that's on Rutherford Boulevard looks like.
So it, you know, I could see where there wouldn't be any south of Main Street, but...
Yeah, yeah.
We're the only three houses, I think. I was asking Mr. Cantrell earlier how far down the university owned, and I, I think they own well into the second block past Lidle, the first row of houses. And, and we're, we are in their long-range acquisition zone, and...
Yeah.
Of course, there's always the possibility that if they were to use their condemnation authority through eminent domain to take us, that it might end up being a chain link fence instead of a...
How long have you been living there?
1985.
Eighty-five.
Well, the house just to your north is, is the university's.
Sure is.
On that, yeah.
Sure is.
We, we looked at that, a project on that house some years ago, I believe, yeah.
There's a, there's a gate behind that. That was, at one time was, I think, the alumni relations' house, but I'm not sure if they still, do they still use it for that? They have guests. They, I don't know if they're living quarters there, but they have people who come and stay extended periods behind it. I think they may be adjunct professors, or, you know, there's a lady, I think, that has just spent some time there, maybe a couple of months. We, we see her when we're in the backyard, so... That is a, you know, it's, there's a gate between there and the church to what, the gate that what used to be North Boulevard, but it stays unlocked.
I have two questions, Mr. Davis. What will, what will the gate on the, on the driveway, what will that fence connect to on your neighbor's side?
The, there's the, the eight-foot shadow box fence that separates me from the university's property. We'll refer to that as the alumni house for lack, between me and the alumni house. And there'll be some kind of, it's right on the property line, so there'll be some kind of post, I think, installed there. I don't think that, we probably would close the gate at night, but probably would stay open mostly during the day.
So I guess my question was, so there won't be any new black metal fence where that alumni house fence is? In other words, the gates are going to, on one side, on your house side, it'll be more metal, I mean, black, black metal?
Right.
And then on the, the university's side, you'll be attaching that gate to a wood fence?
Probably to a post that's just adjacent to, or as close as we can put it to their wooden fence.
Okay.
Their, their wooden fence has, I'm going to guess, eight-foot gaps, two of them, as we go back up our driveway, that is for landscaping. And so we would like to enclose those two with this same fence design.
Is that, is that that black line around the trees then that we see on that fence? It's like a C shape?
Yes, yes, that's it.
That's where they want to fill in?
Yes.
And you'll fill in with wood there to match the shadow?
No, I wanted to stay with the, my idea was to stay with the fluted rail.
Do you know how wide the sidewalk is going to be along there?
I don't, I don't. And Joe brought a point up. I, this, this, this may not work at all anyway. I don't think I can, I don't think we're going to be 20 feet from the, from the road. I, I don't think the sidewalk and the grassy area on the other side of the sidewalk, I don't think that's going to be 20 feet. I'd say it's 16 maybe, but I think it'd be a real stretch.
So there'll be a grass median sort of...
Right, between the sidewalk and...
Between the sidewalk and the street, and then the curb.
And the curb.
Sidewalk, I would think, would be at least six feet, but I don't know that.
And if we, you know, if we couldn't put the fence at the bottom of the, where the, where the yard joins the driveway, then up high on that, where the yard rises up, I just don't think that would look appropriate. I think one of the things that we had in our mind, and my wife, Ann, and I talked about, right, yeah, that since the house is above, that the, the fence wouldn't be such an eye, I don't want to say eyesore, because I, I think Jack Weatherford's fence is really, is really a nice fence, and, you know, it wouldn't be...
Mr. Davis, how, how high is Mr. Weatherford's fence?
I would guess it's, I'd say it's an eight, or seven or eight, maybe six. It's, it's higher than...
It's at least seven.
Yeah.
Who's fence?
And the fence that you came in some months back and we approved there, how tall is it?
It's five.
So you're extending the same height, and it's the same fence, so does it?
Right, the same fence, same design. We're going to put a, probably put a gate right there in the courtyard in case we want to let the dogs run in the front yard every now and then.
To my knowledge, the only front yard with a fence is on East Main. It's a fairly high fence, probably eight feet tall.
That's what we were talking about, the Weatherford fence.
There's actually two there. The Henry Gregg home has got the four-foot green between Hancock and, between Hancock and...
But as far as tall fences, I mean, like in Nashville, they have restrictions that in the front yard, it can only be four, and as it goes along the side, it can step up to six, and the highest is eight. We had one gentleman on East Main near Tennessee Boulevard on the, I guess it's the south side, who he wanted, he's a corner lot, and he wanted to put a fence up, I believe, but he came before us and asked for a landscaped hedge there, and it's still growing. I drive by and I look at it every time just to make sure it's not dying and disappearing. And have y'all considered a landscape?
Oh, yeah, we definitely, when they get through with the sidewalk, and we know what everything's going to look like, yeah, we, that, the way that front yard slopes, I, I don't know how well we could get shrubbery to...
Well, I'm actually saying, in lieu of a metal fence or wood fence, what if you just did a landscape hedge that, that implies a visual, you know, don't come in my yard?
Oh, I hadn't really thought about that, Chairman Thompson. I, I'd have to give that some thought, talk to my wife about that. I haven't, I honestly can't say I've given that...
For instance, part of my concern is that it sets a precedent for more fences, that if everybody started doing it, it would look like a stockaded East Main street if everybody did.
Yeah, I can see that.
So that's why the more, whenever we set precedent in our, our review documents that we go by, we talked about fences, and that they're not generally, you know, we don't like to put them in there just because that open air where kids used to run through yards, and these big open yards with no fences, we're starting to get very much more compartmentalized and taller fences, and demarking your property, and it's almost like, don't come on my property. Yours is a security issue, I understand, but...
Yeah, the definition in and of itself of fence or wall is to keep somebody in or somebody out, and we just, like I said, wanted an extra layer of security.
I thought about bringing up the aspect of vegetation down through there, but it provides a place to hide, so you're not visible. And if you're doing it for security purposes, then, you know, you may be contradicting what you really want to do.
Dr. McPhee's house, I guess y'all have noticed, they built a really nice brick wall on his side, and I have in my mind a question that I'm not sure if that sidewalk is going to come back over on that side until we get to Lidle. I, I just don't know the answer to that.
Well, that was something I noticed the other day, the brick wall is, is right next to the sidewalk, which is right next to the road. It would be a scary sidewalk to walk on, I think, just because of the...
I just think that's going to put more traffic on, on our side of the...
But I think what Jim mentioned, I, I can think of a couple of properties on Main Street that we looked at the same issue. One is the Apartments. I can't remember what they're called.
Now Wood.
No, not Now Wood. The white, white ones, the, they call it the...
Columns.
They call it, and, and I think they had talked about a fence, and we discussed it with them, and they ended up just doing landscaping, which turned out to be fairly attractive. And I think the other house was at the corner of Second and Main Street, Thomas, is that correct? And they ended up with a hedge, and it's not something that someone could hide behind. It's a, it's a landscaped hedge, and it's actually turned out to be quite attractive, and it is living, and it's done well. And, but looking at our guidelines, we, we have been meeting so seldom that we don't have a chance to look over the, and, and don't address this sort of issue very often. I think it's, this is the third time in five, six, seven years, maybe. And so I asked several people before the meeting what the guidelines said, and, and David went out and got them for us. So it's always good to, to recognize what they say, and I'll just read to you. "Fences are generally not present in the district, but they may be added to a lot if they are similar material to other fences and structures in the vicinity, and if they are constructed so as not to disrupt the visual harmony of the front area of the lots." And so I think that's what we're looking at, and what Jim addressed was the harmony and the appearance, and, and I think one of the aspects of the neighborliness of a city is, is, and the friendliness of a city is to keep that openness. I, I often look around and recall my childhood and running through backyards as, I'm talking about young child. I wasn't an outlaw when I was older, but as a seven-year-old, I probably was. And just, you know, though, we thought they were shortcuts, they were really long cuts, but we call them shortcuts, and that's just sort of, and, and, you know, I know that world doesn't exist anymore, but I wish it did, so...
Well, I, I just would, would, would like you to consider our proximity to campus and our position in the Historic District. I believe we're the last house on the Boulevard there that falls in the district, and like I said, we're virtually on campus. And we have kids, I've had kids in the past run through the yard, they're college kids, though, and it's purely a security issue that we're concerned about, and I think without having lived there like we have for so long and seen the evolution of the university and the growth, and how many students there are now. When we bought that house, I think there were nine or 10,000 students, and now there are 25,000. I just, I understand the precedent aspect of your ultimate decision, but I wish you would consider where we are in the district and where we are in relation to the heart of campus.
Would you consider, you know, checking with the, I guess it would be, I don't know if it's the, which department is in charge of construction of that road? Is that, is that the state that's constructing it?
Federal.
Well, but there's a local representative, I would think, whoever's in the city, the engineering office would be involved with that.
The managed project, the combination of city, state, federal, and college.
Right. The money comes from federal, but the federal's not overseeing it. Chris Griffiths, Chris Griffiths would be the city engineer, and you could go right up to his office and look at the drawing and see, because it, it looks to me like, I mean, obviously, there's a little drop-off. You have some steps at the front.
Mm-hmm.
And so it's, the question becomes, you know, where, what, what elevation is the sidewalk going to sit, and what sort of, how do they intend to butt it against your property? Will it have a, a retaining wall? How wide is the, the grass buffer, the grass strip be going to be?
There won't be a retaining wall. I have renderings that are several years old.
Yeah.
That probably have been modified.
They had to modify, I know, a couple times along the way, but...
But absolutely, I would be, I'd be...
Check on that, and then, and then consider, you know, oftentimes, movement of people across a landscape is determined by features like landscaping as well as fences. Fences are not the only type of deterrent. I mean, there's, there's ways of managing people. You go to an airport and people, they manage it by the color of carpet, and so you can really, of course, somebody who wants to violate those kind of lines can, as they can with a fence or any, any sort of thing, it just adds to the level of difficulty, but you can manage movement of people with a lot of different techniques, and that's, that's all we're suggesting, I think, is...
Well, Mr. Backland, Black, Backland, is your concern more the appearance or the precedent it might be set by?
Well, it's a combination of things. I think I agree with Jim in that if you, if you do have a fence across the front lot of every house on Main Street, what, how does that change your perception of Main Street? And so it's a, it's a psychological question, I think, and it does relate both to precedent and to appearance. I think landscaping is softer than a hard structure, and I think landscaping is also one of those things that characterizes, and that's not something that we necessarily govern, we don't govern landscaping. However, landscaping is something that on, in the Historic District affects people's perception of the district. So if you drive down Main Street, you have these arching trees over the street. Imagine that street without those trees. Or if you have a, a house with a hedge, and you can, you can manage a pretty significant hedge that would prevent movement of people at a certain height, that, just the shape, the texture, the color of a hedge versus the shape, texture, and color of a fence, I think those are things to think about.
If the, if the hedge masked the view of a shorter fence, would that still, would that still be something that wouldn't be visible?
There's, there may, it may not still be there, but there, there was a white picket fence in front of a yellow multi-apartment Queen Anne House across from Central Middle School on East Main, and it's probably a four-foot white picket fence. We're talking about a five-foot fence. Would it help anybody's heartburn if we, say, lowered it to four feet to make it still stop people from cutting through? Now, your idea of letting your, I don't know what kind of dog you have, but if you've got a Great Dane, you can go over there.
No, I don't, no.
But would a four-foot fence mediate and make it more palatable to those on the commission who have concerns? I mean, I get your security issue, I really do. I just, for me, it's the precedent it sets, it starts allowing more fences in the front yard, and I, I mean, if it were me, I would love to see landscaping instead, but a four-foot fence gives me less heartburn. Five-foot is, I think, just, it starts to become its own element. If you were to try to hide a five-foot fence with landscaping, you really could not see somebody hiding. Four-foot fence, you know, picket fence, and it's open, I think you may not have to landscape it much at all, if anything, but I think a four-foot would look better. But if I had my druthers, I would rather you didn't have to do it. I know you would rather not have to do it, too.
It's not going to make the yard work any easier.
No, it's not.
I just, I, I don't know if, if you haven't lived on that street when school's in session, I just don't know if you have real appreciation of what it's like some nights, and some very early mornings, too.
I think...
I think it's a, it's a different feel when you get to that corner. The boulevard's over there, all that retail, it's a commercial, it's turned into a commercial corner. And there are a couple of houses left on it, but with what the nice wide street now that they're putting there, I mean, you're not supposed to get a, they've taken, the Main Street feel on that edge, you know, is just gone. So I don't, would we really be setting a precedent for a house down as far on Main or?
If it's within the district, you set a precedent that anybody on East Main could come and say, well, the Davis has got one, why can't we?
And then we would say they're up on the.
Well, I guess we're the only house that joins the university though. I guess my neighbor behind me, Mr. Ferraro, he joins the university, but of course, then you got campus schools, so there are some that join university property.
I think Deborah or Mary May, I mean, I think, actually, if you go down South Tennessee Boulevard or Middle Tennessee Boulevard, I think it's, the median has actually improved it and made it feel less commercial. And I think this area will be, although it's not, I don't know how wide the median is right in front of you, if it's got enough for landscaping, I guess it does for a little bit, but maybe not as much as South Middle Tennessee. And I think, actually, the boulevard development is pretty tasteful.
Oh, I do too.
They've done an excellent job with the landscaping and having the patio and so, so I tend to think that this is sort of a, it's obviously a transitional zone, it moves between.
That's the dilemma.
Between areas, the university on one side and then a couple of little, or a couple of commercial. And then you move on to the apartment buildings, which are the townhouses that are being built south of Main Street. But I, to answer your earlier question, I think a lower fence with landscaping would be, that would soften the texture of the, of the development or of the construction, you know, I think landscaping is always preferable to fences. It's funny, I was, I visited some friends this past weekend who were moving into a new house and they wanna have a fence around the backyard and I suggested chain link, of course, because it is historic, as we've discussed. But they didn't like the idea of chain link fence and I think in our guidelines, we say we don't like it either.
Joe, would you put my picture up again in the house? If we landscaped the front, we'll lose, you can see my poor begonias. The yard's not had its best year, we usually do a little better. Would that landscaping block the view of our landscaping adjacent to the front of the house?
That depends on what you choose, I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of options, I think.
Two things, first of all, did you say you were afraid you may not even be able to get the 20-foot setback?
I may not be able to, yeah, I may not, I just, I don't know, I remember Joe mentioning that to me. And when he mentioned it, when I first went in, they hadn't poured the curb yet and so I didn't know where to measure from. And now they have poured the curb gutter, so, but honestly, it slipped away from me, I just didn't think about it.
He could meet the 20-foot setback just now as close to the sidewalk as he's wanting on this picture, so he could meet it, but it might be in the middle of his yard.
So. Is the setback from the edge of the roadway?
Edge of the roadway, not the sidewalk and not his property line, the edge of the roadway, so of course, this picture doesn't show the four lanes in there, in the curb, so. And of course, that sidewalk, I believe, is getting a little bit widened as well, so all that's determining.
Is the setback the right-of-way, is that, so is the 20 feet, does the right-of-way extend 20 feet from the edge of the road?
No, the fence would be built from the edge of the roadway wherever they're expanding it to, so.
What I'm asking is what is the city's right-of-way and is it not legal to put a fence in the city's right-of-way?
Well, it's showing on here, so these green lines on this picture is actually his property. So the right-of-way goes up to that green line and that has not expanded even with this project. So that roadway will not go past this green line here. So technically, if he wanted to, if that road was gonna be right there, he could measure 20 feet back and that would be the maximum it would have to be and then, of course, if it's not gonna be at that green line, if it's still gonna be, let's say, right here, then I'll give him a little bit more footage to go closer, but.
The reality of his yard is not 20 feet deep, it's more, so he can get 20 feet back.
Correct, yeah, so it's just not where he was.
That is the desired dimension you want to do.
What about some type of bed between my fence, the proposed fence, and the edge of the road with the landscaping on the outside of the fence? What, what would enclose, what would I enclose that bed with? Some type of, I have to get some dirt brought in and I'd have to get some type of wall, something to hold that. Hold it, you see what I'm saying, Chairman Thompson, if the fence is not gonna be adjacent to the.
20 feet back, you could put plants on the grass in front of the fence and still then have some grass in the sidewalk and the curb. You'd have room to put some kind of shrub or flowers or whatever in front of your fence, yes, you could.
Okay. Well, why don't we?
Let's, I've got a couple of comments before we go any farther. I agree with Mary May, I don't see this as a concern about setting a precedent. And the reason I don't is because the Weatherfords have had that fence there as long as I've been in town and that's 19 years. And we have had very little request for fences along East Main or in our, in our district. And the little four-foot wooden fence you were talking about across from the Central Magnet School's been long gone because it rotted away and it's a rental house, it's not being taken care of. So I don't have a major concern about setting the precedent. I also don't have, I probably would lean with a four-foot fence across the front of the property and are you thinking coming off the current fence at five foot and then coming five foot down the side and four foot across the front, what are you thinking?
The fence that we approved is, is basically at the face of their house. That was when we did last, so to me, if you just connect it up to that with a four-foot fence along the sides and the front, it's less obtrusive to me.
Yeah, well, I don't have a major problem with that, Jeff, the other thing, if you look at our guidelines, this material is similar to other fences and structures in the vicinity.
I don't disagree.
And, and it's gonna be constructed, constructed as to not disrupt the visual harmony of this house. Because you're gonna be able to see through that fence like you see on this fence on his side yard, it doesn't infringe on the home, it doesn't infringe on the landscaping he has behind it. So it's, you know, we're in an argumentative point here as to whether this is gonna be a major disharmony, visual disharmony, or it's not. I'm not quite sure that I feel it's gonna be a major disharmony. Now, if you look at my property, we're on the corner, South Main, I mean, of East Main and South Manny, and we chose to put a U-hedge in. Of course, when we started off, it was this big, now it's probably about four foot and probably about two, three, about three foot wide. Because we had a major problem of people cutting through our yard, big time. And since we've put that up, we have not had any problem. And the interesting thing is the people from what I call, you know, the backside of our house that come walking by all the time, all we hear is comments, even though they can't cut across anymore, all we hear is comments about how good it looks and they're happy with it. Of course, that's incorporating landscaping with a metal gate and.
I think that's a good example, I mean, I've walked, I've been walking past your house and I wanted to cut through, but that hedge prevents me.
Yeah, it's a good thing to do.
I'll scoot over, but it's very attractive, I don't know if you know which house he has.
I know exactly which house.
And that's what I was envisioning, is that sort of landscaping, because it really, a U or even a managed cedars or another plant that would work would be hemlock hedges, although it's, the climate's a bit warm for hemlock and then you got the bug, the woolly adelja that'll eat it, but the U is, it's an effective deterrent. And, because it's kept me out.
Joe, would you put up a picture of my courtyard fence again, please?
Yeah, like, that's very pretty.
How would a four-foot look tied into that corner right there by the advertising?
You will notice it the first week and then you won't even see it.
Okay, so that, you don't think that's a, and that's right up your alley, Chairman Thompson, I mean, you would.
I really don't think you'll notice the difference and probably one of those horizontal bars at the top is probably about four feet.
Probably is, yeah.
Would you remove that existing side piece, is that your idea or would you?
I'd like to keep, I'd like to keep that there, just so, I really don't want the dogs to have to run in the front yard very often. I want them to, certain times I have access, but I don't want them to have the, so I would like a gate there.
I would have to agree with Mr. Backland.
Well, my final comment on is, I mean, I'd like to see some landscaping, but that's gonna take time and if you wanna go with the fence, I would prefer the four-foot. It will solve what you want it to do and won't be quite as intrusive.
Maybe, since we've opened the dialogue, maybe I should come back with something at a later date that would show some landscaping, maybe, I mean, I'm not gonna do it till the road's finished anyway, I kinda was.
You're not gonna do it till November when it's a good time to plant too.
Well, I won't do that. It would be futile to do it now with the, with the sidewalk not completed. And as I was telling Chairman Thompson earlier, we're planning some other projects around the house unless we decide to bail out and get off campus, so. Maybe, it's been a very constructive discussion and I certainly appreciate the input. Maybe I should come back with a four-foot with some landscaping and we just table that, I'm sorry to bring y'all in.
That's why we're here.
Yeah.
That's why we're here.
We need to see each other now and then.
But you've given me some guidance now and so would it be appropriate to?
Absolutely.
Handle it that way?
We can table this discussion and just bring it back when you're ready, but I think you've heard a lot of, I think, good information that may be of help to you. I think you see where we're sort of leaning, it sounds like it's a four-foot fence and landscaping, but there are other alternatives to it, an all-landscape buffer that would prevent people, you know, something with thorns keeps people from walking through it, I can assure you that.
Tell me, before we break up, the thoughts about the gate across the driveway and which would.
We've allowed gates across driveways all the time, I think Linda's question is, what was it hooking into? Was it, were you going to try to change the wood fence or work out with the school to be more like yours? Or were you just gonna butt up to it, she wanted to know, I think.
I really like that, the design, the fluted metal design.
The gate would match the fence.
Yeah.
Seems that would be.
That makes a lot of sense.
I really like that design.
No, I like the idea of the fence and I tend to agree with Mary May and with David that I don't feel, I mean, even though you're in the historic district, you're in a totally different world.
It's really changed, it really has.
And I don't feel like we're setting a precedent with a fence.
It's, it's really changed and.
That would be my comment also, that I don't see it as setting a precedent because the fence on Mr. Weatherford's house has been there so long and no one's ever come through with that, it's not an inexpensive undertaking to extend the fence through the front yard that way. There will still be the grass strip, because he's gonna be, just by looking at the photos, he's gonna be about somewhere around 12 to 14 feet back off that sidewalk if he comes in and complies with the 20-foot setback, Joe. So they'll have that grass buffer back behind the sidewalk. Many years ago, I lived on South Tennessee and had a hedge along through there and it was a buffer, but it caught everything. It caught all papers. And the hedge lived very well, I mean, I don't, can't remember now if it's still there or not, but since they widened it before, but that was my only problem with the hedge was the maintenance, it kept you busy. And it seemed to get up, because I couldn't keep it down and created more of a visual barrier to the house itself, so you couldn't see, you know, the foundation landscaping at all at that location.
Well, maybe we'll, we'll work on some landscape design too and something, just with the yard sloping down like that, I'm just wondering, you know, the grass is the only thing keeping it from washing, so.
I would add to it, with your, if they keep the sidewalk at relatively like six inches above the road height and if they keep that two-foot sort of berm where your yard's plateaued up to, then with a four-foot fence, it's gonna look like a six-foot fence.
Yeah, oh yeah, it will.
That's the thing.
Well, I'm just trying to get in my mind's eye what landscaping might, with that slope there, what I might, maybe a ground cover.
Well, I think as you were, you know, going over the dimensions there, I mean, you're gonna be far enough back that you've got plenty of room to do landscaping and grass and whatever else.
Yeah, maybe just leave that strip of grass there and then landscape once we get to the plateau.
Close to the fence and leave some grass in front.
Well, I feel like I've.
I think the further you push it back, the less high it's going to appear. If it were at the edge, the top of the berm, it's going to appear much, much taller. But when it was a five-foot, I think a four-foot's a good compromise, because it's still gonna look like a six-foot fence. But the further you push it back, the more it's gonna look like a four-foot fence.
I appreciate you giving me the consensus, or at least the, the possibilities that the four-foot is a better option with landscaping and then I can go forward. Again, I'm sorry to bring you in without letting you vote on something.
That's why we're here.
And we're glad you're here, Jeff, please don't bail.
Yeah, yeah.
We appreciate your investment into the community, you're one of the last holdouts, you know, along that strip there.
I know.
I mean, honestly, so we appreciate your wanting to maintain the integrity of the East Main Historic District.
We will and, and that's the only house we've ever owned, so. But it's just getting harder and harder to.
Will I make a motion that we defer the request to a future date when Mr. Davis comes back with an additional plan?
Do we have a second? Do we have any further discussion?
Do you not, do you not want to put your fence across your driveway irregardless? I mean, or not needed right now?
I would like to, but again, that can, that can wait too until we do the whole thing. I'm sure it would be practical to have the, if this is approved, to have him make two trips once we start the.
You're looking a ways down the road, it looks like, next year or something.
If they would just do the sidewalk, then I can then.
Once that happens?
Once the sidewalk happens and it's next.
Yeah.
At least on our part of the boulevard, it's the next.
And then once that's done, the grass strip between the sidewalk and the street, is that your, you will maintain that as well?
I will maintain that, right, I'll maintain to the curb.
Yeah.
And what about while I'm here, what about mailboxes? I've got to have another one, is it, is it a zoning commission?
Our group, we've never reviewed a mailbox.
Is your mailbox on the house or on the street?
It's on the street now, but it's really on life support.
That, remember, the historic district, mailboxes on the houses were grandfathered once upon a time, but now, I don't know, you'll have to check with the post office, I think, huh?
Yeah, they don't like walking up to your house, they really don't.
If it's on the street now, they won't move it back to the house.
Unless, where are they, south of Main Street, where are the mailboxes south of Main Street? Are they on the house or?
On the house, street.
I don't know, that's a good question.
I think they're on the house, yeah.
I don't remember any of them.
They're on the house.
So, I mean, I wouldn't wanna be the mail carrier on Middle Tennessee.
That's a good question.
Over there, you know.
I was thinking about building back a mailbox that probably matched the brick on my home as much as I can. on my home as much as I can. Any thoughts on that before?
In my tenure here on the board, I've never, we've never approved a mailbox.
I mean, just your experience, how do you think that would look?
I think the brick, you'd want like a, a brick, like with a beehive top and the boxes in there.
Exactly.
I, I think it'd be fine. I mean, or whether it's a square-headed one with some decorative deep, you know, brick corbeling or something, um, I, I think whatever you come up with. If your house has circular windows, you could say that it sort of, you know, matches that detail or.
The front doors.
Is it, well, the archway. So, yeah, you could say would match your entrance and I, I don't think it'd have any heartburn.
It's just if a car jumps that curb.
Yeah, then you pay for it. Well, they might come, they might also come around and bat it out the window, too, which is usually the more frequent thing and.
It, uh.
The brick will help.
Yeah, yeah. It will.
I've actually seen some in Bellevue, uh, where they put them in like a 10-gallon drywall mud bucket and they pour it with concrete. So when they get it, it just falls over and they put it back up. I'd love for it to be rolling and hit them back when they did it.
A neighbor at one time, Mr. Buckner, had a one that swiveled, so. Swivel around and get the body on that. Turn it around. Okay.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming before us and thank you.
Mr. Thompson, I don't think we had a full vote yet.
Uh, oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Thank you. Uh, all those then in favor of the motion as described, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, we're done then. Thank you so much. Uh, any additional news or, or business, I should say?
Not for me.
Okay. If so, the, the chair would welcome a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are.
Aye, aye.
No discussion. We're adjourned.